...your planning board meeting to order, we all rise for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
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 Here. Okay. All the board members should have received the minutes from the January nineteenth meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Okay, motion seconded by?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Somebody's microphone.
What was that? Oh, my mic, I gotta bring it a little closer. Okay. Yeah, okay, got me now? All right. Okay, all right, so our first item on the agenda this evening is a adjourned public hearing for Myers Run LLC subdivision. Okay, a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll make it.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Hi, so since the last time we saw you guys, which was last fall, the...
State name, name and...
Michelle Zerfus with Berger and Teneri, and which means Michael Lund.
Okay, thank you.
The county has asked that we combine the lots, the drives from six and seven.
Yes, the...
I mean, I mean, sorry, from eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve, right, the two, the two that are gonna enter onto Myers Corners Road.
And so, that's what we have done.
Okay, so you have that on the...
So there's, one will come in here, and then it'll split off to go to the other lot here. This is just to show, to meet the requirement, to show that there could be a driveway for that lot. Pretty much, it's gonna end up following the existing grades, it's pretty gentle. But, the county doesn't want two, they only want one, so they'll be here, there'll be an easement across there to allow the driveways to connect.
Okay.
County also said that they are good with where the main road is, that was the other thing that was holding us up, was because we couldn't get any, any information from the county for those two things.
Yeah, we were copied on the letter from, from the county, that was regarding the two, you know, allowing the two entrances onto Myers Corners Road.
Right, and that letter came in two hours before your last planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Or the email, so that was right there. Then on the back over here, we are no longer proposing standing into the wetland here, or the wetland buffer. We do still have to extend into the wetland buffer for the stormwater and the pipe out to the stream.
And I think, Bruce, if I may, that was, we were looking at one point for a little space for one of those yards, just that we kind of completed, we didn't really, you know, that was the problem from the planning board, that if we could reconfigure and not have to go into that buffer on those two lots where it was a little tight, and that's where they went back and just kind of modified.
Okay, so, I'll just see where that was, that, that's supposed to be, so the moving, moving the basin back into the buffer?
The basin's still where it is on ten, this is all still the same.
Okay.
This is the disturbance area, right here, for the buffer, and then the pipe goes through the wetland out to the stream. But we, we eliminated the ones over here along these lots.
Okay.
And those were just to give the yard more room, so that's been eliminated, but we...
Right, that would, okay.
We have to go in, a little bit here, and then go in here to the stream to get the pipe out from the bottom of the fire retention, just, fire retentions are three feet deep.
All right, anybody have any questions regarding that? No? Answering their, their encroachment at the end? Okay. All right.
And then the county, when they go forward to get the county permits, when it's a work permit, the county did, you know, improvements to the drainage along the road, we'll be connecting and coordinating in with that, there's some under drains and some other items, now be part of the county permit, we're... The site distances are in the county, so that those are fine. Just, the neighbors over here on the other side of the road from this stream, their lots are in the flood plain, so they're complaining about flooding, but the flood plain map clearly shows that their lots are in the flood plain, so...
Right.
There's not a whole lot that can be done, other than we can make sure that we meet the BEC requirements for our runoff rates, which is what our SWIP showed before. We can add chambers underneath the fire retention, or additional retention.
That stream runs south, right, not north, towards those neighbors?
It runs north to the neighbors.
It runs north to the neighbors?
Runs, yeah.
And we, I think the planning board had walked this side, and we met, you know...
Right, yeah, no, no, we did.
So they understand that where the location is in their land, and they know that there's a lot of that traffic as well, and...
And part of it, I think, one of the neighbors had a problem with the county pipe that crosses here, we're trying to, aren't sending any other pipes over there, we're not sending anything up to that pipe, and that much of the water, except the county pipe right here, but it'd just be what comes off those lots.
Where it's gonna cross over, so it'll cross over further down the road.
There's a crossing here, and then the big culvert is down here, and then there's a small crossing here.
So what's coming from your property now is more than what's gonna be coming from the property after it's developed to that particular location?
Here? No, it's, it's, we're still controlling it, so we get the same rate.
I'm talking about the one that the neighbors were complaining about?
Well, the neighbors were complaining, the ones that were here at the planning board meeting were more the ones on this side.
Okay.
Over here, there was like a side, maybe like an email or site conversation for this one.
We had that big...
But we're not, we're not gonna be sending any more, because we can't, the BEC regulations.
And it was the last way that big storm hurricane, where unfortunately a lot of properties had some issues.
So that's, that's where, so the drainage, I mean, it's, we submitted the SWIP back in July, that showed that the, that we're meeting the BEC agreed post. Even, even over here, we're still, I know John, you weren't here, he just peed at the toilet.
And our biggest thing was waiting for the county to get that, plus...
Yeah, so it took four months for the county, after we submitted, so that was, that's the drainage. For the health department, we need SECRE, the health department requires SECRE, so we need to, to get the stream disturbance permit over here, the BEC's all set except for SECRE. What we'd also like tonight is to have the resolution so that at the next planning board meeting, we can felled trees, which would require preliminary, preliminary flat approval as well.
Okay.
And I, you know, we, of the letters, responses to the comments we received, most of them, especially like SECRE and stuff, we, I feel we've answered them. The NOIA, the outstanding comment, SECRE, there were a few others, but those have already been met, and we've gotten more of these, with only SECRE. So it's, it's, you know, a resolu, what we'd like is if you could recommend or ask for a resolution for the next planning board meeting, for the tree felling, the, you know, preliminary flat, because preliminary flats required for tree felling, for your regulations.
Okay, yeah, but we, all right, so we still, I think there's still the other issue we needed to discuss was about the road itself, with the swales, because I don't think we ever really got a resolution from the highway superintendent.
Uh, back in, in May, June, and I'll let Mike speak to this, they did meet...
We did, so Joe, Joe and myself, my father met with Mike at the highway department, and we went over the plan, and he was okay with the existing plan as we're proposing, now Michelle just mentioned that there may be suggestions or alternatives, which I'm hoping to working on, and really, as Michelle said, tonight, our goal would be if the planning board would be willing to allow town engineers to work with Joe and Michelle, come up with a tree bond or something, so I don't miss that March thirty-first cut window. But again, last I met with Mike, in person, I have to see, he emailed me, he met someone at the town, he was okay with the way the road was designed originally, if that's changed, I just heard that, a hundred percent, I'll follow him, I'll just go and work with everyone, so, you know, I just don't wanna miss that March thirty-first.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know we've had the discussion, I think the discussion was also had with, you know, Pizza Terra, I guess, you also had mentioned to you about it, it was, you know, with, with the concerns regarding the, you know, the neighbors across the road, it's worrying about, you know, where's all this water gonna go, to, you know, if it goes off, you know, and then something happens with the swales, you know, the people start filling the swales in, you know, because they want a nice flat yard in the front of their house, then what happens with the water, you know, back out into the road, and, you know, down the hill, and then across the street, so it was, you know, that was, I think that was one of the concerns, I think Pete was kinda, kinda talking to you a little bit about, because, you know, he had mentioned it to me the other day.
Well, like I said, we didn't talk to him, or...
Right, I mean, obviously, I mean, you know, John's, you know, pretty much filling the role now, you know, and again, I know he needs, I think he needs to talk to, to Mike, she had still, but...
Yeah, 'cause like I said, when, when we were out at the attorney of court site before they topped that, he, he said he was happy with the roadside swell concept there, but for a road like this with, with, you know, morsing and ingrading and such, I think his, you know, whatever he might have told me back in May, I think he might have changed course, so...
What we'll do is then I'll engage Joe and Michelle, and maybe we can all collectively look at it or something.
Yeah, I, I...
And modify the plan to make it seem comfortable, be comfortable in the town, and obviously in the neighbors, I mean, I know some of them, so, you know...
So what's the modification for this? If the swell's not good, so we don't waste all this time?
It's, it's basically just bringing the, the drainage into the road, rather than having it off into a grass line.
So that's a curb and a drain, and a catch basin or two?
It's a different road profile.
That, that's what they're looking for, to make this simple.
And Michelle just told me that, and I said, this is the first thing, and since we'll walk the mic and John, and whatever it is...
Because if the swell's not gonna work, and this is your remedy, then design that, and then submit that, and get it over with.
But that's the first one, first thing?
Yeah.
Well, it's the first, we've discussed it, so it's a first for all of us.
Yeah.
I guess my question would be, is that something that would hold the planning board back from allowing us to, you know, whether the road has swales, curbs, allowing us to not miss that, that tree window, because, you know, then that puts us out until October, and I, CS being able to resolve the road profile between the engineers and obviously whatever we have to do to make it more comfortable, more willing to, the engineers come up with a bond estimate for the trees?
Well, the problem, the other problem comes into is the town law says we have to pass the SECRE determination.
Well, I mean, for a subdivision, actually, that's, Michelle noted, they need preliminary flat approval.
Right.
You can't issue preliminary plat approval without SECRE, so, so you, so you have to...
Declaration, yeah.
Huh?
Well, we would need a declaration of significance, and then we would need the plat approval.
And environmental impact.
And then we would do the tree clearing, but we talked about other tree clearings, which are after this.
Yeah, so I mean, with this, with the road, so the road issue really isn't something we have to worry about, at this point in the game, or...
It depends on what the review is gonna look like, right?
No, I'm, I'm confident they can, they can solve that issue, it's just we would like to see it on paper, and any addendums to the SWIP that might be required because of the change in the drainage system, you know, I, we certainly wanna take a look at that before...
And that's one of the other, so, the other requirement, in addition to preliminary plat approval, is a SWIP approval for the tree clearing, because we're gonna have to have a SWIP in place to do, and an NOI in place to do the tree clearing. So all of that would have to be, you know, in place. Assuming, I mean, do you believe that any of these changes would change the road pro, the location of the road, configuration of the lots?
No.
So, I mean, that's basically, so the standard for preliminary plat approval is basically, is, is the, the final configuration of the lots settled?
So if we're, right, so basically the lot configurations, I mean, we've been back and forth with them over the, the issues with the wetlands, so, I mean, that was the problem, now we've gotten the county involved, and they've, you know, come back with the, you know, the approval of the entrance to the road, and the entrance, you know, the driveway's now becoming, becoming shared, so, I mean, it kinda gives us the layout that's gonna go forward. So, I mean, beyond that, what else do we really need to kind of, to issue a preliminary approval?
The neg deck.
Huh?
The neg deck, which, you know, would be informed by the review of drainage that you would do after reviewing the changes to the road.
And I, I know we just submitted today, but there's only one meeting in February, so today was the submission, but the March meeting, but if you get something back in between, but Piffy would accept an interim submission, because there's not a second February, there's not a second February deadline.
It is up to the board, but I would say if, if that's something you could get to us a couple weeks before the meeting, that, that would give us a...
Yeah, we have to...
Get those things met, so they can clear their, they can clear their trees.
Yeah, yeah, we shouldn't push him back to October, we don't have to.
I don't think so either.
All right, so, yeah, because the other, the other thing comes into play, I'm just thinking about this here right now, is the, so not only, not only they have to go, you know, we have to approve it, then it has to, the bond has to be accepted by the town board, which would be, now that actually would be the following week, I believe, correct?
Right.
All right, so that, so that's an on-issue at that point. The only other item then would be is, you know, filing, I guess, the NOI, right, they have to file that for the SWIP prior to taking the trees down?
Is that in the code?
Or do we have to...
They would have to file the NOI for, in order to do the disturbance, so...
All right, and there's a seven-day window on that also?
It's a five-day, and it's a...
Is it five days?
It's been running actually for, three days, depending on what state you do it.
Okay.
So that's, that'd be the fastest, we'll need the MS four acceptance form, so, so that's the big time.
Right, so you need the SWIP accepted, and...
Right, okay. All right, and that's been, that's... And your office has looked at the SWIP already?
Well, we, we did, we've gone through most of it, we, we didn't complete the review because there was discussion about potentially changing the road and changing some of the lot configurations, we didn't wanna complete the review only to have to redo it, so, like I said, if they can get us this amendment a couple weeks before the next meeting, we can get through it, I can't guarantee that there won't be any comments, but...
Is the board okay if I'll talk to Michelle and Joe, probably reach out to Mike to talk to him, Gman, and then get a layout that should, I mean, the lot configuration should not change, the road location is not gonna change, you're gonna go from swales to curbs, if that's what the planning board, like, is looking for, so, in the meantime, working with everything for the trees, so, so I'll work on that immediately.
All right, okay, so you guys are all good with, with doing it that route?
Yep.
All right.
The only thing that I see is, if you want a neg deck drafted, and a resolution of preliminary subdivision plat approval drafted for the first meeting in March, I need his comments on that, because I rely on your review of that to address drainage questions in the neg deck.
All right. Right, so we'd have to, okay, so that'd be, I mean, the biggest hurdle is getting all the information through to all the different people, and having it addressed. Yeah, and then that would require the board to approve the professional staff working with the applicant in between meetings to get this squared away, so, if everybody's okay with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Okay, all right.
And I would just add, for the, the tree felling request, you got that today, I took a quick look at it, we just asked that you put the, the restoration plan together, and put a preliminary bond estimate together, and then we'll take you from there.
All right, okay, so being that this is still in a, this is still an open public hearing, is there anybody from the public that has any comments that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
You, you don't want to, the subdivision, you don't want to close it?
We want to adjourn it.
Oh, adjourn it.
Oh, adjourn it.
Because otherwise...
It starts a clock. It starts a clock if we adjourn, if we close it.
I, I suggest you adjourn it, I mean...
Yeah, you could adjourn it.
That's true, too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
You could close it at the next meeting, if you're voting.
All right, hold on, before we do that, it's, yeah, so it becomes an issue, a legal issue?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would adjourn it only because we don't know what the stormwater situation's gonna be.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be to adjourn it to March seventh, which would be the first meeting in March.
They could use preliminary, right?
Yeah, and there's nothing that says you can't do the resolution, it's just you're keeping the meeting open.
Right, you can't, you can't do it.
Yeah, no, I do, I'm gonna do that in a minute, so I was gonna, okay, so, um, first would, all right, so let's go, let's get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to March the third, uh, March the seventh, sorry.
So move.
Okay, motion's made, seconded by?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, the motion to authorize the planner, or actually, the professional staff to, to work with the applicant, to provide a, to, to work to get this issue resolved, with the highway superintendent, reviewing all the opened issues we have in between meetings. We have a motion to, to approve that.
I'll make that.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In addition, we need to authorize the planner to draft a negative declaration and a preliminary subdivision plat approval.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so that should conclude everything that we need to do in order to move forward to the, the next meeting, so the ball, the ball's in your court.
No sleeping.
Yeah, so I would...
If everything goes perfectly, you'll have a very small window to cut down some trees.
Yeah.
You only need one day to get them trees down.
Yeah.
Depends on how many guys you get out there with chainsaws, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding a special use permit and site plan approval for staged door self-storage amended site plan.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Okay, obviously, you've received the resolution from the town planner?
I did.
Okay, no concerns, issues as it's been written? Okay. I think the only item that we had was the issue of, well, just showing that landscape under the, under the existing sign, so, at this point, I guess I'll entertain a motion
Before we, sorry, just before we do that, can we have a brief discussion about specifics for the landscaping that you're considering, just so that it's not a, a judgment call down the line, we can, you can explain what you're imagining below that sign, and the, the planning board can...
I think we discussed it last time, it was evergreens, we're gonna put some type of an evergreen to kinda, right, to kinda grow in around the, you know, bottom of the sign.
Okay.
You know, either, you know, a dwarf, dwarfed variety, I believe, of something, so that, you know, it's basically to mimic what we've normally asked for on new things, where it'd be like a, you know, usually there's a wall and some type of landscaping under it, but at least to kinda close it in, I think that was where we left it last time, so that's, that's pretty much from the last meeting.
Okay.
All right? So, I mean, that's all, right, that they're the only, I mean, obviously, that was the only outstanding item.
Yep.
All right, so with that, again, back to the, back to the resolution, um, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a Central Hudson KM electric transmission line replacement.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Anthony Miranda, attorney from Cuddy and Fader, here for Central Hudson. Brian Demisco's usually with me, but he is stuck at Storm Damage Control Center, west of the river right now, so...
I can imagine.
He sends his regards. So, we're here really for what I think is a fairly quick procedural aspect of the process, mainly given the fact that our project site is a right-of-way, and there's some unique notice, I guess I would say, some options for us to make sure we comply. We typically go pretty overboard and pretty conservative with how we do our notices, so I think the first thing we wanted to do is come back to you and just make sure you know that we did appear before the town of Poughkeepsie, the day after we appeared before you in January, as we mentioned, this project stems, excuse me, traverses both Waukinger and Poughkeepsie. Poughkeepsie has consented to this board serving as lead agency for the secret process, so at that meeting that we were here on January nineteenth, we had discussed, just confirming that the board was gonna set the hearing on March seventh, and with that, I can hand it back to you, and then we can get into notice details if you'd like.
Okay, I know, yeah, we do have to set the public hearing for March the seventh, which we can do now. I'll entertain a motion to set public hearing for the KM electric transmission line for March the seventh.
So move.
Okay?
Second.
The second by?
Mark.
Okay, Mark is in here, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So I know we need to have some discussion regarding signage. We have a, right, because, yeah, we, the town code requires you to post signs along the front of the property.
Yeah.
It becomes, what, what is the front of the property?
Every hundred feet. Yeah. So I do have some suggestions for the board, and just to, just to go through it quickly, we did submit a draft notice language to the town, and I, we can follow up on that after this to make sure it's comfortable, but if there's anything major with that, you know, we can certainly make edits, but assuming the language is good, we're gonna do the mailing, we're gonna, and just so the board is aware, I think it's booked at this last meeting, when we do the mailing, we're actually uber-conservative in that, we don't just do it a hundred feet from the boundary of the right-of-way, we actually do it from a hundred feet of the boundary of the property that the right-of-way crosses, so some of these parcels are rather large, and you could be on one... So some of these parcels are rather large and you could be on one end and a thousand feet away, you're then starting your hundred feet, so the list looks kind of large because we like to be careful with it. So that's how we're doing it. The list that we submitted to B and staff included all those properties in the town of Wapanger. We're also going to be a little cautious here, I know in the past the town doesn't notice properties in other towns. We, we may send our own extra notice just to those parcels along the boundary of the town of Wapanger that may fall within a hundred feet, and it's kind of interesting, it's because the airport property falls in the town of Wapanger, it's huge, and if you run a hundred feet along that, there's actually some parcels that are really far away from this right-of-way, but in the town of Poughkeepsie, and we're just going to include them just to be safe, just again, just to cover all ends. We're gonna, we'll work with B to publish, I know it's at least five days before the upcoming hearing, and then the signs. So what, what we were looking at was a hundred feet of frontage, of course, based on some other notices we've done in this town with Central Hudson and some other towns, I had a couple suggestions. The, wherever the right-of-way crosses a road, we would figure we do it on each side. So, for example, that's at Widmer Road, the right-of-way crosses over, we put one on one side, one on the other, so we had both frontages there. Another one would be the, where is it, the New Hackensack Road crossing, right there, we put one there, one on the other side. We'd also post it at the Myers Corner Substation parcel on the road frontage to make sure that there's one there, because although the, the line doesn't actually start at that point, it's a little bit further in, that's probably the best way for people to see the notice sign. Another one that we were looking at was, there's a, the Morgan Court subdivision, which, which extends off of St. Nichols. We thought we'd put it at, instead of, it actually cuts through like one or two parcels kind of on the back end, so we were going to put it at the intersection of Morgan Court and St. Nichols, so that it's on actually, you know, more clear to the public. So I think in total that comes out to about six signs, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then it was just the board or staff had any other suggestions where we should post them.
Okay.
It kind of covers it.
Yeah. You guys feel good with that?
Do any residents have to be notified?
No, they're, they're going to do the mailings to all, everybody, but this would just be for the, you know, the, the lawn signs that they put out?
It's 122.
Just standing it, yeah.
It's over.
It's over 122.
Yeah, they'll, they'll submit that all to B.
Could you submit those proofs of...
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
For residents to be...
Yeah, the stamp certified.
Okay.
We'll get those through.
Okay. All right, so in regard to the, so six signs, I guess, would be the number, if everybody's agreeing with that?
Yeah.
All right, so that would be, that's fine by us.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, you don't have to make a motion or anything for that, all right, Jim, it's nothing, it's just...
No, I, I mean, I just...
It's nothing.
It's in the record.
Yeah, okay. So I think, yeah, on that, I think that's it.
Great, so we'll get on that and start working with B to make sure we, we're good. I think the notice is okay and the list, you know, we can confirm. And also, well in advance of March 7th, we're going to submit correspondence, just responding to each of the comments that we got from, we got from January, probably get it this week, the next couple of days, so we'll have that well in advance on March 7th, in case there's anything else you want to hold. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much, I appreciate you putting us on to do this.
There you go.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay. All right. The next item this evening on the agenda is Cooper Road Lot Line Realignment.
Yeah, as long as, I guess as long as you can pick it up on the camera, we should be okay. Yeah, I don't know, she's trying to run to get an easel, but I think we're all, um, I guess, basically give us a brief overview of what they're, why, and you're looking to do this realignment?
This is a subdivision, I think it was approved by the Health Department in the 80s.
Okay.
1990.
1990. And the septic system that was on lot one was approved and they maintained that, they kept renewing it, and the Health Department, I don't know much to say, first realized that there was a public water supply on the parcel...
There you go.
On the parcel down here.
Yep.
So that, we don't have the two foot, 200-foot separation and they won't grant a waiver, the Health Department won't grant a waiver because it's a public water supply, so...
Okay.
It's Cooper Road trailer park.
For the trailer park, correct.
Which has had problems with its water supply.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I pretty much knew what she was talking about since she said "public water supply."
That's right.
Which I believe is, is still at, is still, still an issue there?
Last I heard.
I'm sorry, what?
I was asking Jim if it was still an issue with the Cooper Road, the trailer park, they have a, their water system, there was some concerns there.
Yeah, it doesn't sound good, but I...
The property was in foreclosure and they were trying to work out buying it.
Oh, so it's still...
My, my client was trying to get in touch with somebody.
All right, just like turn it just a little bit, so that the camera up there, there you go, perfect.
So, the, there was a flag lot on the, the side of, so this is lot one and this is lot three, the flag lot was here, so to get the separation, I moved the flag to the other side.
Yep.
Which gives us, we won't need any waivers from the Health Department for that.
Kind of moves your, right, moves the septics over...
Buys us another 50 feet.
Yep.
So, um...
All right.
Yeah, that's, it's...
So that, that's pretty much the reason behind it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they did try, they tried to get through the Health Department with waivers and they're, it's just not going to happen.
Okay, which makes sense now, I didn't think about the other issue with the, with the, yeah, with the trailer park. All right, so you did receive the letter from the engineer and the planner?
I got the planner's letter.
Okay, did you get the engineer's letter?
I don't get it, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
He had more comments than I did.
Should have been sent to somebody in your office.
Was there comments? I mean, the planner's letter was great.
Glowing, recommend it.
No, we, we asked you to provide some additional information on the grading of the profiles, because it's not completely clear that...
Oh, thank you.
The proposed grading is, is meeting the code requirements, so, you know, just some additional detail, we also suggested that you might want to consider a shared driveway for the lots, and, you know, that's something that you'd obviously need to talk to your client about.
Because of the grading.
Because of the grading, it would eliminate the need to have that cross easement for the...
Grading.
Yeah. But if it remains as is, one of the, the other comments we had was, if you're going to do that cross-grading, then we would want to note on the plan that that's going to be done before a building, a permit is issued, before either of the houses is, you know, for either lot.
So the client remains the owner on both?
Just so that there's no issues, like if, if one of the lots gets developed and then the second one, they can't do the grading of their driveway because they, they need to...
Yeah.
Encroach onto the adjacent property.
Okay.
If you, if you do choose to pursue the shared driveway, you'll still need to demonstrate that you could have two independent driveways, so I'm not sure which way you'll come down on that, but...
So the grading on this, so if I fix the grading on this, I can have that driveway in that section, sorry. Is that unique?
Well, in the code, you, if you want to do a shared driveway, you still need to demonstrate that you could have two independent driveways.
Okay.
You wouldn't actually need to do it, all of the, the complications associated with that grading easement and, and doing all that grading at one time, you wouldn't need to do, but we need to see essentially what you have on the plan right now, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we're not saying you have to show a shared driveway, we're, we're just suggesting that it might be something you consider.
Okay.
You know, less upfront cost for development, but you have to come up with a maintenance agreement.
Okay, so, we haven't submitted to the Health Department yet because I think they might want to see soil testing, so, but they've seen the conceptual plan, they just, we don't have enough information for them to make a formal submission.
Okay.
Because it's winter, this just came to me like a month ago, so, um, that's probably going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, you make the submission through there?
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have to have a public hearing for this?
Well, that's, I was just going to ask that question, because I'm not sure, this is minor, you know, this is minor in nature involving a couple of undeveloped properties. Jim, is there the wa, can we waive that, or is that something?
I wish Barbara was here, because you know the answer to that question.
Yeah, because I, I...
Because I know we were talking about amending the code to do that.
Yeah, we, we've been back and forth with this a couple of times, that's why.
Um...
You know, so to, you know, because if we're not going to do it, that's one thing. If we're legally allowed to waive it, I mean, I'll only address it to the board, I mean, what do you, how do you guys feel? Do you, do you feel that there's a need for a public hearing for this?
No. I don't see any other, it's just that one building that's even close to it, I'm not sure what that is.
The what?
The old, the old nursing home.
Yeah, that's also...
The one to the, just to the north of these lots?
That, that's owned by the...
Other than that, there's not even anything in eyesight. No. Two blocks across the street.
Trailer parks to the south, that's, um, you know, there's no owner, I guess there's no owner for that right now, it sounds like.
How do you find, no, no public hearing, that's cool.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's really just flipping a lot.
Yeah.
You have anything there, Jim, or?
For an individual lot, if they need to clear the trees, do they need any kind of permitting for that?
For clearing the trees?
Yeah, just before the 15th of March.
It's all woods.
Yeah, probably, I'm assuming.
Well, I mean, here they already have an approved lot.
Yeah.
It's just a lot line readdressed.
It was, it was, well, he approved, the approved site, when, site plan was probably back before there was an issue with the Indiana bat.
Right. They had an Indiana bat.
They were still in Indiana back then.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why they're endangered, by the way, if you will.
Yeah.
Because they're from Indiana, so, obviously they'd be endangered.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, in terms of the felling, it's not like there's a note on the plan, but on the other end of it, you probably want to, you know, you probably, anything that, where they may roost, you probably do want to take down.
Yeah.
Technically, technically it'd still be taking if you came, you know, if you took out habitat, but, but it's an approved lot, so...
Right, so there's really nothing in our...
You know, the only thing would be, I guess the other, the one issue though is a SWIP, for disturbance over, is there a disturbance over an acre?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
They'd have to put up a bond though, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
They'd still have to put up a bond to drop the trees.
We're not, we're not, nothing's being taken over by the town.
So it's a, you know, it's a, and it's an approved lot, so...
Yeah.
Just one or two private driveways, so...
I thought they had to put up a bond if they're going to clear the trees, even if it's not a road.
Prior, prior to, prior to a subdivision approval, they have to do that.
But here they have a subdivision approval.
Yeah, they have, yes.
Oh, okay.
From the 90s, yeah.
That's when the public hearing was too, right?
So you don't require a building permit, as far as you know?
Yeah.
Would there be a building permit?
You still need, you still need the building permit.
To get, to take the trees down, I mean.
Oh, to get, no, I'm, I'm not sure, without Barbara here...
Okay, I'll ask her.
I don't know, the best bet would be to call the office in the morning and ask them.
I'm just worried we won't have Health Department approval, so we won't be able to get a building permit before March 15th.
Yeah, it's going to probably take you a little bit for that.
Can you wait for this, Barbara, to get back, out of curiosity?
Okay.
Yeah.
After tomorrow? Okay.
Okay. So I guess really it comes down to just...
I mean, I, I guess the thing to do is to schedule a public hearing, because I can't find provision that...
Okay.
Are you going to clear and grub it? Cut the trees, clear and grub it?
No, we don't have to do that, I'm just worried about the trees not being down before the 15th, they could just drop them and leave them there, it's not...
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any disturbance?
I don't think they need a permit to drop them.
Yeah.
Clear and rub it, they do.
Right, yeah, if you do disturbance, then you probably do need a permit, but...
Yeah, technically if they just drop them, I don't think, for purposes, it's a SWIP, it's not even considered to be disturbance.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they need to do more than...
And if he's saying that there's no, if there's no...
Do grading though?
If there's no...
To do the grading for the driveways?
Right.
Well, once it's scheduled and they put the notice out, we're still going to have to have a public hearing, but then, yeah, you know, imagining nobody's going to...
Yeah.
All right, so if they, if we don't have that ability, I guess, it sounds like to waive it, that was the concern, then I guess we'll just schedule the public hearing.
Okay.
I think we're going to have, I think, it sounds like we have our hands tied on this one.
Okay.
But I know we've, there's been discussions over the last few years about trying to get that amended for, for minor changes, because there are, for site plan, for site plans, we can do it with minor changes, we can waive the, the public hearing, so, the next question would be is...
Oh, you know what, that's...
Huh?
Let me look at the recent amendments, maybe it wasn't incorporated.
BD needs this back. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it looks like they emailed it to Brian, it's in on the back, so...
You guys don't talk to each other?
Now we're having a falling out.
Right, it's very difficult.
No, he's not. He's a pleasure to work with.
I'll probably deserve it.
Thanks.
You don't have to, she's on camera?
It's on record.
I can't pull up the new amendment, so...
Okay.
Can, can we, can we schedule it, and then if you find out tomorrow that we don't need it? Do you have to vote to waive it, though?
What's that?
Do you?
Well, what you can do is...
If we schedule it now to move this along...
Right.
And then you find out otherwise, there's no, there's no issue legally that we would have to worry about?
So again, if there's...
Once we schedule it and we find out, then we, when it comes up for the public...
Right, so the, the resolution would be, if it is required, it is scheduled for.
Okay. All right, so the next question B would be is, when would be the next available date to hold it, because I know that we do have the Central Hudson one on for the 7th?
21st?
21st, okay?
Sure.
Okay.
I just found the section, or did we lost?
So...
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing, right?
Is what? We have, well, the 7th, I don't know if we're going to have, the 7th, well, I mean, we could do, would you be ready for the 7th?
Do I have enough time to notice? If we have to have the public hearing, do I have enough time to notice?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not in the recent amendment.
All right. So let's, well, okay, so we could schedule it for the 7th, if you want, and make it a little easier. Okay, now, so, did somebody make a motion that if the public hearing is going to be required, as advised by council, that we'll set the public hearing for March the 7th?
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're set for that, and then, I guess you have a little work to look at just in terms of what the engineer brought up this evening?
Yeah.
Whether or not a shared driveway would backfit or not with the, with the changes in the plan? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was standing above, planning board may waive the public hearing for an application that consists solely of the realignment of a common lot line between two adjacent lots.
Okay, so that has been approved, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And that fits this definition, council?
It's two adjacent lots, correct?
Is that, that fits this, which he's here for?
Yes.
Yeah, which is basically the same thing.
So I withdraw.
Okay. All right, so you're making a, you're going to make it, some, Ralph's going to make a motion to, with...
With his prior motion.
To waive the public hearing for this project?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is Chelsea Farm Subdivision.
Hi, good evening, I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. Many of you are probably familiar with this subdivision, an extension that was just granted for it earlier this year. So, we are here for the same reason that a lot of people here tonight are talking about the bats as well, so, we're looking to establish a bond, so that we can fell the trees possibly before March 31 deadline for the bat hearing in this area. So we've, we've gone back and forth with town engineer's office, and I think we're at a point where a number that is agreeable to us has been established. We provided a plan to show where the tree clearing was, and also, the camera's probably going to have a hard time with it, because I put it in blue, so it didn't show up as very, as well as it probably could have. But we, we showed a series of 57 evergreen trees to, as a, as a screening measure, that would be part of the bond. Mr. Bowden presented an area where there's five additional trees, which we don't object to, and I think they're appropriate, and will provide some screening to some of those adjacent residential developed properties right there, so, that's where we're at, and looking to establish that bond, so we can go to the town board with this.
Okay. And this is for tree felling, is just for what you're showing on this map?
Yeah, this is the map...
Or this is for the entire...
It's, it's about 13 acres, of, of the 190, they're here, we've cleared about 13. And the intent is to, to do all the early phase work with regard to infrastructure and providing that, with site distances that we need, and some soil stockpiling areas that we need as well.
But you're only looking just to clear the trees right at the moment?
Yeah, it would just be felling the trees, no clearing, no grubbing, no stump. No issues, no issues with any of this.
All right. So is boards, uh, board's okay with this plan? Go ahead and make a motion to approve the felling of the trees?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so you're all set, then?
We need to put a bond out into the resolution here.
I guess, yeah.
It might be...
Want to read it in?
I mean, just what?
Just for the record.
So, so we'll put in for the record, so the, um... So the resolution says state for, um, the planting of 62 trees, uh, including legal and engineering costs for a total of $19,778. That, uh... Okay. So, with that, I guess that'll just, the secretary will amend that, the previous motion. With no objections by the board, correct?
No objections.
Okay. All right, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too. Good evening. Okay. All right, seeing that we're at the end of the agenda this evening...
He just read, "we don't need it".
No.
No, you're talking about for the other property, for, for the, um...
Oh, Cooper Road, we don't need it.
If somebody, maybe if some, yeah, if somebody can, from the office...
It needs a permit, but not a bond.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so they just, yeah, if somebody from the office can reach out to, um, to Amy and ask, and let her know that that needs to take place, just so she can let the applicant know. Okay. All right, so we have, um, need to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter with council?
Pending litigation.
Huh?
To discuss pending litigation.
Pending litigation, correct.